All right. Good evening, everybody. Sorry for a little bit of a late start. We had some technical issues. So I would like to call the February 21st, 2024 Franklin Township Board of Supervisors meeting to order at 7:03 PM. In attendance are myself, Chairman David Gerstenhaber, Vice Chair Donna D., and Supervisors Don Dowling, Jim Johnson, and Betsy Rogers. And also in attendance are the Township Solicitors Guy Donatelli, Engineer Stanley Corbett from ACOM. And I don't see Jeff online. So Jeff and Stacy, Jeff and Melissa are not with us tonight. And our Township Secretary is here, Stacy Hollis. And there are two, four, six, eight-ish members of the public, even though you're not technically a member of the public. Let's rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation under God, individual liberty and justice for all.
All right. Thank you, everybody. All right. So now I'd like to open the floor to public comments. This may, any comments relating to tonight's agenda items. Commenters must state their name and whether they are a resident of the township or a non-resident taxpayer of the township. If you do not identify yourself, your comments will not be included in the minutes. Do we have any public comments beginning in the meeting?
This is John Auerbach, Franklin Township resident. I did notice that the Lexington Point issue is on the agenda, and I just want to add a little bit of information. About a month ago, I was heading back down Guernsey Road to my home when I took a swing through the neighborhood. And they're busy building houses, but what's most important is I did take a look at the wastewater treatment plant. Although I couldn't see inside the building, just looking at all the equipment outside, it looked like it was complete and ready for commissioning. So I would expect that he's ready to run that thing as soon as he has a process load for it. That's my comment. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, John. Do we have any other public comment? All right. Not hearing any. Donna?
Thanks, Dave. All right. So let me make a motion regarding the Board of Supervisors January 17th, 2024 meeting minutes. So I make a motion that the board approve the January 17th, 2024 Board of Supervisor meeting minutes. May I have a second for that?
Second, Betsy.
Betsy to do that. Great. Any discussion? Okay. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Say nay. Good. All right. Okay. One more set of minutes. So I make a motion that the board approve the February 5th, 2024 Board of Supervisor Workshop Meeting Minutes. Second for that?
Second.
Okay, Jim. Any discussion? Okay, all in favor say aye. Aye. Say nay. Can you say, any again, say nay. Motion carries five zero. Thank you. Back to you, Dawn.
Oops, sorry, had to unmute. I'd like to introduce Guy Swift, but I don't know whether he's with us.
He is here.
Oh, okay. I'd like to introduce Guy Swift from the Avondale Fire Department for his report. Hi, Guy.
How you doing? Thank you. Thanks for having me. I'm here just to give a end of year report for 2023. Fire calls in Franklin Township. Fire calls here. 2023, we had 541 calls, nine of them being in Franklin Township. It was one of the busiest years we had as far as the call volume goes. EMS for 2023. We had a total of 30 ambulance calls in Franklin Township. We had 1,804 calls total for 2023 EMS calls. 1,090 of them were transports, 186 were refusals, 201 were recalls, 93 were fire calls, 43 QRS, and 191 were no service. I'll give you a copy.
What's a refusal?
A refusal is where we would go and check the patient and they're like, we don't want to go to hospital.
Okay. They wanted you in just to see how, it's not a bad thing.
No, what they normally do to like check the blood pressure and stuff like that, and then they'll call the ER doctor in Chester County and say, hey, and Jim wants a refuse. We checked everything. Okay. So they sign off and we go home. And just hopefully nothing happens. If they do, we have legal documentation that it covers us. So one of the biggest things that I'm dealing with right now is, and I hate to say it, but Bowling Green Inn is, is last year, we did 321 calls out of Bowling Green Inn. I have worked with the, I sent the CEO of the company out of Knoxville, Tennessee, a certified letter. He got the president of the company back in touch with me, went through our lawyers. And it was, I mean, not to be smart, it was costing us money every time we went up there because who don't have insurance, who only pays $30, who has $150. But anyway, they agreed that we could bill them as a donation request once a month. And they have agreed to give us $2,000 a month, which will help offset the cost of the, of the staffing and stuff like that. It's still, it's not where we need to be, but at least it's something. Like I say, it's work in progress. We're still, still deal with the guy. Probably about every quarter, I talk to the guy down Knoxville and and they're trying to get it figured out, but that, that place right now is just a mess. And, and it's, it's tying up our EMS units for, I hate to say, but for some time it's nonsense calls. It's news, you know? We had a guy one morning get up and had his breakfast and he met with his counselor and was like, I had a dream last night that if you take the deer hangers off of a deer and put it on a different animal, I wonder what that would look like. I think that would be cool. They called 911. We had to take him to get a psych check at Christiana. I'm thinking to myself, you don't want to hear some of my dreams. You'd pass all that and just send, but anyway. Exactly. But no, I mean, it's like I say, it's work in progress.
It's a call back.
Oh, it is. Yeah, it really is. I mean, like the was last, the platoon was working tonight. So four days ago, they had five calls in 24 hours. So, well, anyway, we're running the Christiana Hospital is where we're taking most of our patients in 689 times. 327 went to Chester County last year. 47 AI DuPont, nine to Wilmington, five to Riddle, two to Paoli, two to St. Francis, and nine to other. The other may be, we've been, if it's on this, if it's the center of the woods, we'll take them to Union. If they, if they, you know, they don't mind going to Union. It's affiliated with Christiana. So that's where we'll take them. It looks like the busiest day of the year last year was Friday with 289 calls. Like I say, I'll give you all this stuff. Day shift, which is we do day shift from 6:00 AM to 1,800 hours, which is 6:00 PM. And daytime, we're running 1,138 calls, overnight from 6:00 P to 6:00 A is 666. So so I'll give you all that stuff. Some of this might be repeats just to, to tell you what went on last year. We did a floor project with our epoxy floors in the EMS bays and ambulance bay. It was $116,500 that was paid for by grant. We did all the work in-house as far as digging the, the old system out of the floor, pouring concrete and what have you. So it ended up costing us $9,095.14 to do the whole project. We built a new shed out back, got rid of the two wooden sheds. Got a grant for that. That was $15,000. By the time we did the site work, poured the concrete, it cost us an additional 15. Excuse me, needed a new washer and dryer for the career staff. I just happened to be at the Lowe's at the right time. They gave me a price of 1240 discounted at the 965. I walked outside and Charles Wilkerson was there and I talked to him and he said, I'll mail you a check for $1,000. So we made 40 bucks off of that deal. The chief engineer last year by mistake forgot to budget 10 new tires for our Peterbilt tanker. So I reached out to Billy McGovern. He was at a function at the firehouse. He went over, looked at it. I told him about the tires. He said, well, I'll buy four of them. So him and Johnny, man, Freddie, they always go back and forth. So I called Johnny, man, Freddie. I said, Billy just bought four tires. He says, okay, I'll buy four. And Mike Hopkins bought two fronts. So they donated 5,800 hours worth of tires for the Peterbilt. We are updating our camera system in our facility. We had one that was obsolete, half of them were working. So the board got together. We have male and female there 24 hours, day, seven days a week. And with the world we live in today, I said, we either got to fix it or do away with it. So we voted to fix it. We pulled all the wire ourselves to save money to go to additional cameras. We concentrated more on the outside than inside. We'll have a TV screen in the, in the day room, coffee area, whatever you call it. So the guys and girls can at least monitor. God forbid somebody pulls up. So that's, that's a project. We're moving on. It's costing us roughly about 15, between 15 to $17,000. And John Kane's office looks like he's going to support that for me. I've reached out to John Kane and it sounds pretty promising. I'm hoping. We did switch billing companies midway last year. We went to HMC and since we went to them, our billing has increased about 27%. We were averaging high twenties, mid thirties. Last month, we actually collected, deposited in the account was almost $44,000. So it was a very good move. And then finally, last year total for calls and duty crews, we try to have a duty crew Monday through Friday from 6:00 A or 6:00 P to 10 o'clock. We try to have a crew on station so whoever's called, we're at the door. Seems to be working pretty good. On Monday nights, we, like last Monday night, we had 18 guys hanging around. So we had tanker and two engines going out. We had some. So it's, it's working. So with the duty crews and call hours last year, we did 29,118. Meeting hours was 2,324 and training hours was 2,872. So like I said, I'll prove, give you all this so you have it. I appreciate your support and moving forward. Hopefully we can continue down the road we're going and if there's guys needing anything, let us know. We're here to do whatever. So.
Absolutely. Thank you. So I'm always interested when you talk about your data. You, you said you had one of your busiest years in, in a while now. Has there been an uptick in any specific kind of call that you've noticed?
I, I really don't think it is. Like I say, Bowling Green Inn is killing us with 321 calls. It's, it's actually 24% of New Garden Township's calls is what it comes out to be. So the township's actually going to start looking into maybe seeing what they can do on their, on their behalf, but I think it's still just, I hate to say, but I still think it's the flu and the COVID virus. A lot of us just
People getting sick.
People are getting sick. You know, they don't feel well and respiratory, a lot of respiratory and just, you know. They didn't, I didn't bring that report with me, but we do have a breakdown of what the calls were, but like 65 last year, 65.85% was New Garden Township. 2.83 was West Marlboro, 1.66% was Franklin, 1.44 London Britain, and 4.8 was yeah, I can give you all that.
Yeah, we can. Yeah, be interested to see the breakdown of what kind of calls you were getting.
I could provide that. I didn't know if you guys would want to see that because it's about three pages long, but I, I can provide that to you. That's no problem.
Yeah, that'd be, that'd be interesting to me anyway.
But like I said, we're here to do whatever.
Thank you, Guy. Appreciate it.
Thank you all. Excuse me. The last I seen is they're now saying next year. They're still talking ER. This is just hearsay. ER lab and X-ray. And then I think 10 beds to start. You know, because I was at London Britain last Monday, I think it was, and they asked the same question. And one of the people in the audit said, well, is this going to do anything for your call volume? I think it's going to turn us around quicker for the nuisance calls, but if somebody's still having chest pains and it looks like it's like a stroke or a heart attack, we're still going to beat feed to Christiana or Chester County because they're going to get them there. Then they're going to fly them out and then it's going to cost somebody $25,000 for a helicopter ride. So you know, so like I say, it's going to be depending on what the, you might have to go there to get somebody stabilized and then get them transferred out. But you know, I, I think, you know, there again, I've heard different rumors that they're going to open what I said, then they're going to tear the rest of the hospital down and start completely over. They said it might be cheaper. Was what Tower Health left out of there. They left that, they evidently they took the communications out of the wall. They took pipes. They, they yeah, it was crazy. They took like three tractor trailers and stopped to an auction in Lancaster, beds and different things. So I don't, I, every time they, we think we get a positive note, they push it forward again. So I'll believe it when I actually see stuff happening up there.
God, we have Christiana.
Yes, absolutely. Yeah, it is actually is, you know, I had an ambulance last month. The crew called me. I was working. They're like, dude, we're, we're stuck in Westchester. We're going to be here for at least an hour. Okay. Well, there's not what we can do. We are trying our darndest to keep two ambulance crews on in the daytime and we have done pretty good. We're like at 97%. Yeah. Just for the simple fact that if you go to Chester County and they don't have any beds ready, the patient stays in back to ambulance. You got to keep them patient cared so they tell you can bring the patient in. At least Christiana, they do turn you around quicker. But yeah, some people want to go to Penn. So we'll call ahead and we'll tell the patient, say, you might be wait for hour and back to ambulance. You know, they don't have nothing ready. Okay. They, they want to go there. So that's where we go. And we're, we'll take you wherever you want to go within reason, but you know, just, I don't know. The EMS world right now is crazy. The other thing we did do is I think I reported last year of my first year back in New Garden, helped us and bought that new ambulance for us. We did send our other Ford to 2000 was it 2015 Ford? We had the salesman look at the box. When he come down to get, show us the demo. And it was fortunate enough where I signed a contract that day to have that re-chassis. What they do is they'll take the box off of that, back a new Ford chassis and under a brand new ambulance right now is costing $400,000 and you won't get it for probably two years. So the Ford, the Ford chassis is in, the ambulance is over in Jersey at PL Custom as we speak, getting remounted. And it'll end up costing us $187,000 versus 400,000. And we'll get five to seven years out of that ambulance. So I think it was a wise move just to, you know, they did find some extra, originally the quote was 157. They found some corrosion, which we knew, you know, you got taking that stuff off. They found corrosion underneath of it, found some other stuff they had to fix. So let's say, long story short, it's 187. Brand new ambulance right now is 400,000. And like I say, you're going to wait two years to get it.
You only get five to seven years out of it?
Yeah, with the amount of miles we're running.
Just running in the ground.
We're just running. I mean, that new ambulance got the, the one that New Garden bought, that's what, two years old and it's got almost 60,000 on it already. You're Jennersville or Christiana in Chester County. You know, it's just, don't take long. Bowling Green, but we got Bowling Green. We take everything Christiana. Because we know we can get out of there quicker with them. You know, we're not sitting over, I hate to say, well, I'm not going to have, I hate to see the ambulance tied up for that reason setting in Chester County. So our goal is to try to give back so we can serve the rest of the community, you know? So that's all we're, what we're doing.
The ambulance is our diesel, I think.
Yes, yes. A lot of guys are actually going back to gas. I don't know what the benefit is, but I know a couple of companies that have specified gas.
I think the gas engines are lasting longer now.
Yeah, it may very well be because all the pollution stuff, we found out out with some of our engines that with the DEF and the pollution stuff and the regen and it's it's pain in the butt. That's a lot of people, like I said, are going back to gas and probably for that reason. So. All right. Thank you.
I appreciate it.
All right, Jim. All right.
I gotta read it.
Yeah, Melissa's not here, so I'll be reading the January Treasuries Report. This is a comprehensive monthly report of the Township Penantures of the month of January 2024 and year-to-date. The January 2024 Treasury Report includes the following disbursements: the General Fund with disbursements and transfers of $241,777.06 The Park and Recreation Fund with disbursements of $627.46 The Open Space Fund with disbursements of $114,808.46 And the Capital Reserve Fund with disbursements of $0.00 The Emergency Services Fund with disbursements of $3,373.00 And the Fire Hydrant Fund with disbursements of $580.80, leaving a balance in all funds totaling $1,805,706.36. So I'll make the motion that the board approve the January 2024 Treasury Report as presented by myself. Do I have a second?
I'll second that.
All right. Thanks, Dave. Any discussion? Okay. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Carries five zero.
Hey, Betsy. Betsy, you want to take your mic?
The zoning officer's report. The report was compiled by the zoning officer and includes the number of permits processed for the month of January. The month of January 2024, there were four permits issued. And we made $500 in permit fees, $0 in miscellaneous fees, $0 in recreations, recreations and open space, it should be recreations and open space, $0 in impact fees were collected and 24 inspections were performed.
Thank you, Betsy. And now we will move on to the Park Recreation Open Space Report. Andrea?
Hi.
Hi.
Thank you. So update from our February Pro Board meeting. First up, we met with Liam Kelly about his scout project. I believe he is there tonight. I can't see the room, but I believe he's there tonight to present his project to the Board of Supervisors. We reviewed changes with him, updates that we thought needed to be made to his proposal. And just tried to help get him prepared for being in front of you guys tonight. We do know that there are still some changes being made to the Cross and Park Franklin Preserve map. And the Pro Board and Board and the Township will be printing that map for Liam when time comes for him to put it in his kiosk. And so he'll show you a map tonight that will be changing and we'll make sure that that is updated prior to kiosk installation. We would also like to make sure, you know, pending approval from you guys, that before he starts actually building, that we're able to meet with him and see the materials in person. I believe he has some of those there with him tonight, maybe to show you. That was a possibility. Moving on to 2024 Initiatives for the Pro Board, we discussed two of them at our meeting. One was the Cross and Park path. Board member Overton walked, walked the, the path that we have been discussing at Cross and Park with several of the board members to review. And I think Paul is here. I don't know if he wants to chime in on that at all.
I, I can, but I, I think, Dave, are you going to discuss overall trails later or, or what should we do?
I, so we are having some issues with our, with presenting right now. So I'm going to talk about briefly about the, about the trails. I'm going to see if I can share my screen.
Okay.
But yeah, I'll, I'll show you what we, we talked about at the pro as best I can.
Okay. And well, then I'll just briefly say that, you know, for months or if not a year now, I've been saying I want to get a cross trail in and that I wanted to show the supervisors and the supervisor has asked me to show them that. Because you were having trouble picturing it on the map. And I said, we have to wait till winter. And now winter's here. And so when I was out in the woods with Dave and Jim looking at other trails, we took a minute to look at that one, even though I hadn't fully marked it out, but just to give them an idea. And then also, I, I did not have like an official walk with all of you supervisors and I'm happy to do that anytime you want. Now it is fully marked and ready to go. If Donna or Dawn, I think, and then if Jim and Dave want to rewalk it, whatever is your preference. So that's all I'll say about it, Dave, and I'll let you talk about the rest of the trails.
Yeah. And I think from Paul, I think that the, the board will need to walk that trail. I think they need, need to see it and, and visualize what, what you're, what you're what you're doing. So we can find some time, I'm sure, and do that. We do that quite a bit.
Friday afternoon, if you guys are open for it.
Yeah, we, let's, let's talk about it offline. Everybody's, but we'll, we'll, we'll find, find some time to do it. So, oh, you made me the co-host. Thank you very much. So let me, let me bring up. So one of the things that I presented at the, at the meeting was this sort of, this master trail plan. It's still a work in progress as we talk about, as we talk about some of these, these options here. And let's see if I can make this presenter mode. All right. Perfect. All right. So what I, what you're, what you're seeing here is the in total, the Cross and Park map, trail map and the Franklin Preserve trail map. So over here where my, my cursor is, is Franklin Preserve. And then here is Cross and Park. And so what I've, these black lines here are all the trails that are, I'm going to, I'm going to, for lack of better words, that we're abandoning for a couple of reasons. Depending on what we're talking about. I don't, I don't need to necessarily go through all of the reasoning, but for primarily for most of them, they were either in some awkward position in that they were making folks traverse through wet areas, which is where my, my mouse cursor is here, or they were simply just in awkward positions. Like this trail right here is a straight up and down trail that goes into the woods. And so while the trails aren't, they're going to disappear naturally. We're not going to do any work to delete them. So if you really want it to keep walking through the swamp, you certainly can. But we're not going to encourage people to do that. So when we come up with our master trail map, they're just not going to be included in that map. We want to, we don't want to encourage people to, to use those trails. And so we have a much better trail system in mind and a much simpler and easier to understand trail system. So I don't know, I'm not a, for my first time in Cross and Park, I would walk down this side and I always ended up down here in the swamp and, and was saying, wow, I don't know how to get around. So the goal here is to simplify. And so what I did was forgive my terrible photo shopping. Actually, it doesn't look too bad. So I, and so this is what it looks like with all of those trails deleted. And you can see it's much simpler. We're adding a few trails, but we've eliminated a lot. And so we have a lot more continuous open space that is going to be untouched. There's again, a long stretches of property here that are, that are wide open for, for wildlife. So, and it's much, much more rational looking.
Dave, could I just jump in to say, we can't read the legend, but to point out for the public, all the blue lines are streams, not trails.
Oh, yeah. Good. Yeah. So, so that's a good point. The, this is the, there's different colors in here. But I think the, the, the major difference between say these brown trails and some of these red trails and the blue trails is the, or blue is not, they're not trails. They're, they're streams and waterways. So but one of the things that we talked about is to really make this happen to make sure that we can, I'm going to keep saying delete, but these, we're just going to not encourage people to use these trails that I've, that I've deleted from the image. Is we need to restore the old post-road trail, which is this trail right here. This trail exists. It's there. You walk in there. It's a, it's a, it's a nice trail because it's, it's a road. It's our, it's an elevated area. It's out of the water. And it's a loop that's And it's a loop that someone can enjoy without actually going into the water. And so what does that pro project look like? So this in total is the restoration area that we're going to be looking at. And like I said, the goal here is to restore the established dry trail. So the key here is dry. Anyone who's been down in here knows it gets very wet. And so we want to remove those and restore existing trails. So these are not new, these are all here, they just need to be restored. And I say like, in my mind, I think it rationalizes the trail system. So, you know, we talk, we talk to a lot of trail people and they say, we think about trails in circles. And so you have these circuits, and if you stay on the trail, you end up back where you are. So that's the goal. So there's three phases. The way I think about it is there's really three phases. The first is this gravel trail. So this goes down to a bridge with a, I don't know if it's officially an ADA area, but it's designed so folks who have mobility issues can bring their, you know, bring their wheelchair or whatever mobility device they're using down through this hard packed gravel trail and park here and and enjoy the enjoy the stream. So this needs to get rehabbed. So if you've been down there, this is an eroded gravel trail. So this is going to require some gravel, perhaps a small berm construction to just channel channel the water from moving down the trail to moving off the trail. As I talk about these three phases, they're all going to be done by volunteer labor. So that's the first phase. The second phase is the old post road trail. This probably, I I don't know, maybe Paul disagree, but this would be the most amount of work because there's a lot of overgrowth on this trail. It's walkable now, but it's clearly not a trail. You can see where it was a road. But it really needs some some clearing. The nice thing is it establishes this, reestablishes this historic, I went forward one more, one, one more than I should have. There we go. So it's overgrown. We're going to, if we, once we get this restored, it eliminates the need for all these other other trails in here. And again, this is not going to be prone to flooding like it does down up in here in the northern section. And again, accomplished with volunteer labor. And then finally, again, the northeast connector trail. This is again, an established trail. People are using this trail, but there's some areas where it does get wet and it just needs literally needs to be moved over five feet. Right? I think we walked it and it's again, not major, major work. And again, this is going to be accomplished with volunteer labor. And so this is the project.
The northern bike trail.
Oh, that's right. So one of the, one of the interesting things that we're going to be doing and is there's a, right now, we mow a trail through a field here. And so rather than doing that, we actually have now, we're going to be putting in a walking trail or a mountain bike trail, natural trail is how I think about it, from the paradox connector down through to the gravel trail. Nice thing about this, and there's a couple of other trails that we've looked at in Cross and Park that eliminates the mowing. So we don't have to pay for mowing or we don't have to deal with, deal with that part of the part of the trail maintenance. So the goal is lower the cost of ownership, if you will, and make it a lot more sustainable. So this, this does both of those things. And there's a couple of trails like that that we're that we're working on. The other nice thing about this is that there's no permanent construction. You know, if this is wants to be abandoned, we just abandon it. So we're, there's another section of the trail that we're, so all of these trails are doing that. But there's a couple of trails in Franklin that were just we're we're re, we're we're going to change the nature of the trail, cut out some of the large switchbacks. And there's no, no work to be done there. We just abandon them and they just go back to nature.
So Dave, will you like get, is this part of this to present to the board and then we endorse it? Is that kind of where we're going here?
Yeah, I mean, I think this is.
Sounds really well thought out.
Yeah, I, and I think one of the things too is is what I'd like to do, and I'm not going to be at the next, so I'm not going to be at the next pro meeting. But it would be nice to have a a a plan on on a timeline on how, what we're going to need for each one of these phases and how long it's going to take and what and I'm, you know, I'm going to say, put Paul on the spot, but it might not necessarily need to be Paul. If Paul's going to do it all, is, you know, who's going to, who's going to kind of organize these trail maintenance projects and what is that person going to need? If it's Paul, it's Paul.
The trail guy, one that we talked to, he's he's part of this?
Matt Thompson is Matt. So Matt is, he he work, he'll be working on this piece here. So a lot of these brown trails, these little brown trails, those are, those are trails that that Matt is is working on.
Okay, so the other trails.
Yeah, and these are much simple. And well, he'll probably like kick me for saying that, but they're, they're not a major restoration project. These are just.
These are bigger ones, the ones.
This is, this is going to take some work, right? This is going to take, take work and and more work and organization because he's.
The brown ones are existing except for that top one. Actually, he just finished it. So it is now there, but.
Oh, good. That's great.
So the brown ones are existing. It's just the yellow stuff we need to, what did you call it? Restore, restore.
Yeah, yeah, because they they're they're there. They just need restoration.
So I'm I'm happy to do it. You know, I've been planning these trails for many years and I've said it on our walk, I go out in the, in the rain and watch the streams and, you know, understand what's possible and what's not. And it is mostly labor. The, the only thing I need from the township is gravel. So, you know, as the one that's highlighted now in pink, it won't take too much gravel, depending on how much resurfacing we do, but there's some washout, we just want to fill in. So that's some gravel. And then the center section doesn't require any gravel. It requires weed clearing, which actually is pretty easy with machinery, like walk behind mowers and stuff, nothing big. Then on the far right end, the the last one you talked about, yeah, that one. As you said, some sections, we just move over onto a little bit higher ground, five or 10 feet, but some sections will need some gravel to fill in swampy areas where we're just not able to move out. So it's just more gravel from the township. There is a one section where a stream breaks through old post road there, that'll need a little bridge. And I'm hoping to just reuse one of the Boy Scout boardwalk bridges. But if not, I may need some lumber. So I'm not sure about the lumber. It's it's minor. It's nothing like the bridges we've built in Bamshire. It's a very small walkover, right? But other than that, I only think I need is gravel. And and this is the stuff that we can do in a few weekends. I don't see this as a long term project. These are, this is pretty easy to knock out. So it'd be pretty quick.
Yeah. So I think, thank you, Paul. And I think just from what I'd like, just from the board is a nod, you know, thumbs up that this is something that we want to do. Again, very little, if any, money is going to be outlaid for this.
So Dawn, are you okay? I can't see your face. You're 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 good?
I just put the thumbs up. Yeah. Absolutely.
All right. So we're good. Everyone's good with this? Okay. All right. Thanks.
And and we'll just, as you requested, you know, we'll coordinate with Jeff to tell him when work weekends are and and coordinate with him to get any gravel we need.
Yep.
Is that all right?
Yeah, that's perfect. And I think, Paul, what I'll do, I don't, I, in this presentation, I have some of those proposals we talked about at the pro. I'd like to couch that conversation until the board has seen what you're talking about.
Yeah, that's fine.
And then we can have an organized conversation about it, but.
Yeah. Well, I just, I would like to say, though, if you could show it, it's number slide number two, just to, just to say, it's a short section here in the white. The white, yeah, is what I'm talking about is the cross trail and it's no different than the other ones. And, you know, I had always proposed that it become a paved trail for going around. But as Dave said, maybe we start off with gravel and then you see how that goes. And so that, I'm happy with that, but let's talk about it after I show you all where it is. But I don't really want to make it a big deal. It's not much different than the other trails we're talking about. Yeah.
Just personally, I wasn't happy about it being paved, but the gravel, I mean, gotta see it, but I'm more.
Well, and it changes.
Comfortable there.
Yeah, I think it also changes the complexion of the project because if you pave it, now you have to worry about stormwater.
Yeah, I, I mean, there's some engineers around we could ask, but yeah, it's such a narrow trail.
Potentially, we should, I should say potentially worry about.
Correct.
So that's what, that's where there's a lot of questions about this one.
Yep.
A few questions, not a lot of questions, a few questions. So let's wait until we're ready to just talk about it.
All right, I'll coordinate with the group to go out there.
All right. Thank you, Paul. Appreciate it. All right. So I think that's all I need to share.
Yeah. And thank you to Dave and Jim and Matt for walking the trails. I'm glad to have a good plan together.
All right, Andrea, back to you.
Yeah, sorry about that. I got kicked off for a minute there. So back to the list, the twenty twenty four initiatives over at Bamshire. Pro board, pro board member Bob Magnus would like to do a raised flower bed at the entrance to that preserve. We've asked him to put together some sort of proposal to review with the pro board and discuss. And then he'll, and then he or we would bring it to the board of supervisors to review. So that's the status of that. New business, we talked about the Cross and Park maps. You guys just reviewed that while I, when I was kicked off. And Dave, I don't know if, when you started that conversation, I I think, you know, Dave, Dave Gerson Haber will be the new pro board liaison. Donna is, she's focusing her efforts on a different project this year. And so, and so we have a new liaison, which is, which will be nice. Garden Club, the Garden Club is working on, Dawn gave us a little update there. The Garden Club is working on removing and reworking some of the bluebird boxes over at Cross and Park. And so we have some volunteers, they have some volunteers working on that. They were, when they were originally built, they, you could not open them. And so they're, they're modifying the boxes. Is that right, Dawn?
That's going to be my next segment. So yes.
Okay, good.
I'll elaborate a little more.
Okay, good. Um, we discussed, there's a new grant called the Doc Stetter Grant. I believe that the pro board had utilized that in the past. We're going to look into whether or not playground equipment might be eligible for that grant. So I think Paul Overton is going to look into that. And then lastly, there was, there were, there was a break in over at Presale Preserve several weeks ago. It was mentioned on social media, but we wanted to make sure that, you know, kind of just the masses or everyone is hearing, you know, be careful, lock your car, don't leave anything, you know, valuable, visible, take your keys with you. And so that's just a little note for the community. Let them know what's going on. And that's it.
All right. Thank you, Andrea. I appreciate the update. All right. So Dawn, would you like to move on to Friends of the Healing Garden?
Yeah, absolutely. And I can, I can dovetail right into that with the bluebird boxes because thanks to Betsy and Amy Carletti Noji, Amy, Amy is the official queen of the bluebird trail, but Betsy went and cleaned out all ten boxes on our bluebird trail. And Amy is getting the hooks so that we can open them. And Amy had numbered them all last year. And for what people can understand about a bluebird trail is you have to monitor the bluebird boxes. And as soon as one group has fledged, if you clean it out, another group will come. So you can have up to three broods in the boxes, you know, a year. So we could have up to, you know, thirty, yeah, thirty some bluebirds in there. But anyway, so Amy's numbered them and Amy is keeping the log. So I'm going to put on the Facebook page of the garden, healing garden and the park for people to please tell us if they see bluebirds, if they see the other bluebirds. So it's going to be a real educational program. And if you remember, Kyle Bianco had designed signs. I've talked to Jeff and Jeff's going to get a price from his guy. And I'm going to ask David O'Reilly, who is Owen's father, who did the the Healing Garden Arch. And he's also has a printing company. So we're going to get a couple of prices for the signs and hopefully we can put two of those bluebird signs up, which will be wonderful and educational. And then I'm happy to report that we're starting to think about the garden and Betsy and I have already put our heads together. I'm meeting with some of the other ladies next Thursday. And we're, the first project we want to do is try to get those red bud seedlings. It's all covered with little red bud seedlings, but Paul wants to have some of them for Bamshire anyway. So we can start by taking those out and I'm hoping to give those away as free seedlings at the Easter program. Because everybody loves red buds and free seedlings are free seedlings. So it would, they, we won't throw them away. So that's the wonderful part of that. And then the next thing Betsy said, we can start around the edge of the garden without waking it up completely by pulling some of those big sticks now out of there and stuff. So anyway, I have been also in contact with three very young, brand new master gardeners. And they have offered to help. And they said the only thing that they had to have was it had to be have an educational component. And I said, oh, you're a gift from God. So I'm going to meet with them and find out what kind of classes, we're going to design things and find out what they can help us with. And I also have three different, very professional people that want to give classes and help over there. And the segue with that is I'm meeting with David Payne, the library director tomorrow night. And we're going to talk about the spring story, story time in the garden and we're going to get dates for that. And we're going to talk about some new things. And one of the last things I want to do straight away is I want to do a decorating contest for all of the new little libraries. So with that said, that that ought to keep me busy for at least a couple of months.
All right. Thanks, Dawn. Good stuff. And how, if someone wants to get involved with the Friends of the Healing Garden, how do they do that?
Well, I have a Facebook page, Cross and Park Friends of the Healing Garden. And there's also Friends of Cross and Parks and Preserve, Cross and Park and Preserves. There's two Facebook pages. I also have an email list. So if anybody's not on Facebook, they can certainly give, I can put it out on the, I'll get Jeff to put it out on the Franklin Township page. Because I also have a email list that I update the email people that are not on Facebook.
Great. Thank you.
I'm going to switch us off. That was great, Dawn, to the Planning Commissioner report. And we have Paul Agassi here with us.
So the Planning Commission met on February first and the only real topic before the Plan Commission was a subdivision sketch plan for five forty three Churchill Road. Nathan Klein presented the PC with a detailed summary of the sketch plan, which is intends to split for five forty three Churchill into two properties with a shared driveway. He explained that the solicitor and the zoning officer will ensure that the lot conforms to the Franklin Township code and also noted that the property owners will need to apply for shared driveway access and maintenance easement and the appropriate stormwater management easement documents, documents, excuse me. And he reiterated that the new lot must have their own, each new lot must have their own stormwater management, septic and well permits. The commission reviewed this, discussed it. And then they were basically asked by the applicants for a sense of the commission in the sense that they wanted to know if the commission saw that there were any problems with this that they needed to know about. And as on the basis of the information that was presented, they saw no obvious issues with it. And so Benoni is going to move forward with creating a subdivision land management proposal. So this was basically a sort of exploratory proposal. And that's the Planning Commission's report. The size of the lot was, the acreage is fairly significant. And there are actually three lots ultimately involved because. Three lots ultimately involved, because there's a lot that fronts the road that is going to engage in, um. A certain amount of, um, land trade in order to help facilitate this. Um, they need, uh, driveway frontage on the road, and, uh, so. The, the road, the lot on the road is basically gonna yield some land, gain some land, stay, um, within, um. It's, I mean, you talk about it's a two-acre minimum, it's actually not a full two-acre minimum that need to have, um, I don't know what the exact square footage is. The other two lots are, uh, the other lot is much bigger, that's being subdivided, but off the top of my head, I could not tell you. Yeah. Yeah, I'd actually have to see.
I saw the plan and it's not, it's, it's way more than is required by.
Right, I mean, they're gonna have plenty of land, the, the lots are, um, acceptable within the zoning for the area and beyond that, they have plenty of land. For all the material, the, um, like the, um, stormwater management, all the septic that will need to be put in, none of this is a real issue. Uh, so it's a, it's really a question of, since this is essentially gonna involve three different property owners. Uh, it's a question of getting everybody to work together, and then making sure before they start that process that there were no significant issues. With this plan, because they weren't about, they simply didn't want to undertake, undertake the expense. Of getting involved in this without knowing that they at least had a way forward.
It's gonna have to come to us anyway, so we'll, we'll see.
It's gonna, it's gonna go back to the Planning Commission, it's gonna have to come, um, to the board, yes, so. Um, this was, uh, essentially an exploratory discussion.
Are we ready to move on with the Historic Commission?
Yeah, so that. So that would be me too. Um, so on, uh, February sixth, um, the Historical Architectural Review Board and Historic Commission had a combined hybrid meeting. Um, it was our organizational meeting because we did not have our organizational meeting in, uh, January. And, um, at the meeting, um. There was truly was elected Chairman of the Historical Commission, um, Nan Lattimer was elected Vice Chair. And, uh, Sarah Beth Kohat was elected Secretary, this actually represents the same officers we had. Probably for the last couple years. Um, and then, um, with respect to the Harb, I was elected, uh, Chairman of the Harb. Um, uh, Lou Mandich was elected Vice Chair, and, um, we basically have no, um, willing. People, which is a problem we've had with, um, the Harb for Secretary, so I will continue to act as de facto Secretary. Um, I did try and see if we could not arrange for someone to at least hold the position. Um, frankly, I've been producing the minutes, but it's good to have an extra, um, officer if for some reason. Uh, the other two officers cannot attend. The major topics on our agenda were the Churchill African Cemetery, which has been an ongoing, um, situation, and. Uh, we are hoping perhaps to start some work in, um, March, but I've, as I've said before, this does. Depend on our, uh, coordination, um, with Crystal Crampton, who is our contact at the. Uh, Union American Methodist Episcopal Church, uh, which owns the cemetery. And, um, we're really operating. In an assistant sort of mode in this situation, helping to gather volunteers and stuff. Um, now that we've basically reconnected the church with their cemetery. On another note, for other cemeteries in the township, I had an email exchange with Chuck Mabah, who is the, um, trustee for Mount Olivet. And he is hoping to undertake a cleanup of that cemetery this year. And that was, um, I was glad to reconnect with him, I wasn't sure where he was, um, and. Um, so basically, I told him that we would be happy to, uh, assist in that, i- if he needs volunteers. He's, the Mount Olivet Cemetery is in much better shape than, uh, and its. Location is more amenable to doing work, so I don't know how many people he's gonna want, um, but. Um, again, uh, we'd be happy to assist with that. In terms of the Mason Dixon Art Corner Connectivity, um, for the moment. Uh, information is being collected and they're seeking to identify themes that would be the basis. For developing, um, approaches, uh, for historically themed trails. It could also be, um. Agricultural-themed trails, there's a variety of, um, uh, possibilities, um. And some of these trails might involve, that, you know, trails may really be in quotes, this may involve setting up a situation where somebody is able to do. Um, sort of automobile and walk touring, so you might have to drive between a couple sites. I. You shouldn't envision this as a situation where there's gonna be one trail connecting these locations. It's really more of, uh, um, having a way of allowing primarily probably residents, but also, um, people who are not. Um, from the local area of exploring the, uh, history. Um, whether it be agriculture, religious, or other aspects, and so for example, Mount Olivet Church. Um, would, might figure in this because we now also have, uh, the documentation of the early years of that. Um, church when it was founded, uh, through the, um. I don't know what to call it, the church record book that we acquired last year, um, so. We will have to see how these things develop, um. Uh, it, it will be interesting to see whether there is money to help us develop these things. Um, the people who are helping to manage the project, uh, which, uh, who come from Heritage Strategies. Um, Peter Benton and Heather Reefer are also been very involved in working with the county. In America Two Fifty and other historical, um. Development, uh, they like, they're developing a heritage tourism plan for the county, so they're very well aware of, um. What the funding opportunities, if somebody wanted to undertake, uh, further development of one of these, um, ideas. Where those funding opportunities are, um, a lot of that is at this point, however, very speculative because. We haven't, as a group, decided on, um, themes that we think will work for the townships involved in the project. And that will, the next meeting which occurs in, um. This was in January, should incur in March, um, and I don't have the date for that yet. But that next meeting will, um, focus again on this sort of themes issue and, um, those. Uh, locations within the townships that, uh, work with these themes. And in so, in one case, for example, Elk Township is, lies within, um, the, the far west end, lies within the Serpentine Barrens. So that may be an identified area, but that may be something that Elk Township was pursuing with Nottingham. Rather than within this project itself, so there, there may be spinoffs from, from this project that have nothing to do with the. You know, what the four townships themselves can pull together. So, uh, on the, uh. One aspect that we've been trying to do is developing brochures, we've had some of these brochures at, um, the Fall Festival at our table there. So we have an agreement with Seventeen Twenty-three Vineyards to, uh, get a. A selection of brochures in there, um, we have to acquire, um. Some sort of brochure holder, but we already have the brochures, so we hope to get those in there shortly, and we're working with some other locations. And the, and thinking of contacting other locations just to kind of get, um, this information out, this is part of our. Charge as a Historical Commission to help publicize the township and other local history. And if you're not familiar with that, the, one was on, um. Ben Franklin's relationship with the township, and obviously we share his name. Uh, another one was on the Mason Dixon Line and the Art Corner, which we may actually break that up because, um, it's a rather dense. A little brochure right now, and I honestly can't recall the third one, even though I wrote it. So, and I'd also like to get, uh, a brochure actually out of, um, work with London Britain to develop a fourth brochure because. London Britain was established very early on, um, it was split off from, uh, New London. In seventeen twenty-five, which is only two years after, um, New London was established. And it was basically established so that the Welsh Baptists could have their own township effectively. And for the first, I believe, a hundred years, it was primarily, um, a Welsh Baptist township. And so the, um, Meeting House that's down there began life as a Welsh Baptist Meeting House, this is down in the park. And, um, when they held services, they were held in Welsh. Yep, and so, um, there's a very interesting history there, and, um. The, uh, John Evans House, which is the big empty ruin unfortunately, due to a fire. Uh, was the house that, um, was owned by the family that ran mill down there, and that mill was. One of the most successful mills in this part of the county. Um, and so that's all part of the story there, so there's another story to tell there, and what I would like basically to encourage. To work with other townships to, to make these just generally interesting and not just about Franklin.
Oh, are those brochures here too?
Uh, well, actually, no. Sure, I brought the box back from the Fall Festival and it's sitting in my office. Along with the, um, I don't think the rocks, I had to weight them down, I think those, I put those back in my yard, but no, but we can get some in here. And we should. Yeah, and so I have to come in and talk to you about what we could use as brochure holders, and I'll be doing that at some point in the next couple weeks. And we also, um, talked a little bit, we've been exploring ideas, and I've actually been talking with, um, the New London Area Historical Society. And the London Britain Historical Commission about ideas for, um, celebrating America Two Fifty, because one of the ideas we've talked about. Is having a, a lecture series that would involve all the townships. Um, we have some things where we could, we have, on the subject of Thomas McCain, for example, we could actually have a, a lecture that. Um, as pertinent, it's pertinent to three of those townships because, um, he was born here. Uh, he was educated in London, and he, at Lund's Tavern, he wrote a significant letter at one point to Caesar Rodney. Um, when, and I forget what position McCain held at the time, but McCain tends to get forgotten and thought of as a, a second-tier. Um, colonial leader, but he was actually, I believe, active in the Continental Congress from start to finish. And, um, at one point, I believe, was, um, he held positions both in Delaware and in Pennsylvania, so he was really quite an influential guy. So that's one of the things we talked about, um, the Goins are very much interested in doing a. Um, a project that, um, they're sort of working on, Kathy's exploring it with, um, fellow named Mark Evans. Who's doing a similar project in Cow Township, and, um, she's working on that, so I don't wanna discuss that too much yet, but. Um, we'll see how that goes, we've also talked about maybe doing some sort of, um, historical work in the park. Um, for the Fall Festival, we could just set up some, for lack of a better word, I'll call them history stations, uh, along certain areas of the park. What they would look like, I can't tell you, but for example, we could simply ta- talk about, one of the, the things we might do is have. Flags from various historical areas, eras of the United States, and just have a little, um, piece of information there that people could take with them. Um, if, you know, it's just something to do, it's, it's not earth-shattering, but it brings a little bit of history to the advantage. And it would get people out on the trails. Um, I believe we talked about, because we hadn't mentioned, we hadn't met, met in January. Um, the identification of historic resources in Big Oak Creek State Park, but I believe I submitted information to you. For the last meeting, which I was not able to attend, um, in any case, um, I worked with. Uh, people from London Britain and Elk, and actually Emily Kilby, who is a Cecil County resident, to identify. Um. Several dozen locations in Big Oak Creek State Park that, um, are historic resources. Um, and a fair number of these were unknown to, uh, park management and DCNR. Um, so they now have that information along with, um. Uh, GPS coordinates, so they can find them, my GPS coordinates are slightly off because they're based on my photographs, and so I'd be standing here and taking a photo of building over there. But it gets you close enough, and they will actually go in, um, Rob will probably go in with, um. Um, uh, much more, um. Refined GPS locator and be able to get a very precise GPS location for this. I do intend to expand on this because in some places I only identified sites. And not all the buildings there by location, and in some of these sites, they're actually spread out, um, over say a hundred feet or so. Um, I, the township has a copy of this, I don't intend to make this public, um, because it's. Really a very precise way of telling people who might be interested in looting to how to get to these places. And, um, I, I don't wanna create a situation where we're sending out that information. So decisions about making this information more broadly available, I simply live to, leave to DCNR and the, and the park. It's, you know, I, I, I'm fulfilling my part of the bargain, I don't wanna go too much beyond it.
We also don't want DCNR cloud hook.
Well, see, this is, that's, we, we discussed that very briefly, and, and this is, is a little concern. Um. That we have in that, um. You know, I, I don't want them going in and deciding that these are all essentially attractive nuisances and unsafe, and, and obliterating them. Uh, I don't think they'll do that, they haven't shown any propensity to do that in the White Clay Creek Reserve. But we do have a small piece of bad history with DCNR, we had a historic resource on the property. Um, that while it was not, um. You know, like, most people would probably not consider it a significant historic property because it was not that old. Um, but it, it, it fell, it was in our historic resource, and shortly after DCNR, um. Acquired the property, they raised, uh, not only the dilapidated outbuildings on that property, but the house, which at least appeared to my eyes to be in better shape. And there was never any interaction with the township, so that, um. The township had no idea that they engaged in demolition, I think that, um, they probably feel they don't need to come in. To the township for demolition permit, and so we only identified the absence of this historic resource when we put together a historic resource atlas. And sat down and, and actually tried to confirm all of these things, so, yeah, I have a, you know, I. Hoping for the best. So, um, finally, I'd just like to note that, um, we have a couple upcoming, um, talks in, um. March on the fourteenth, New London will be holding a talk on Cape May history, this topic may sound a little familiar. To the supervisors since it was the topic in September, and it was the topic in November. Um, New London had a, a transition in their management of their mailing list in, over the summer, and so. It was discovered that, um, most people had actually not been informed about the talk in September, and the decision. Was made to cancel it because we thought we might be sending our speaker into an empty room or nearly empty room. Um, in November, he got sick and had to cancel, so we're hoping that a third time is the charm. Instead of three strikes, you're out.
That'll be at the township building.
But that will be at the township building, and, um, he's going to be talking, uh, about. The Cape May area history, not just Cape May itself, um, but he's, um, given the talk, uh, one of our members has heard it, it's quite an interesting talk. And then also in March on the twenty-sixth, uh, and also that's at seven PM in, um, New London. Um, in March on the twenty-sixth at six thirty PM at, uh, the Deerfield Country Club. The Friends of White Clay Creek, which is a Delaware, um, nonprofit that works to support, um, the state park. nonprofit that works to support the state park, is holding its annual meeting. The meeting is open to non-members and I would suggest that people consider going because there will be a talk by the University of Delaware Professor of Archaeology Jay Custer on pre-colonial Native American presence in the White Clay Creek area, which I think everyone will find very interesting. Unfortunately, I have a conflict. I won't be able to attend. So I'm hoping that somebody records it. And that's all I have. Thank you. Are there any questions?
Uh, where you go ahead? Yeah, talk about that.
Oh, yeah, sorry. That's the sub, yeah, that's the sub agenda. That was not our discussion. All right. So you should have received, which unfortunately I don't have in front of me, a short just bit of information on Beth Scalish. Yeah. I, I mean, I can answer questions about it. Like I wrote that. So I couldn't repeat it verbatim without seeing it. Okay. So actually Beth is, we have a lot of membership overlap on the Historical Commission and the HARB. So we have, this is why we meet jointly. So Beth is actually, has a willingness to serve on both boards. And I would like to have her on both boards. We do not have any, you know, we have openings. So this is not a problem. And did you receive her?
Yeah.
Yeah. I, thank you. So she has a long experience as a real estate agent locally, which is actually important because and the Harb is supposed to have a real estate broker member, which is very difficult to fill. A lot of Harbs have problems with that. Other Harbs have problems with getting an architect member. We haven't had that problem. So the point of having someone who has a knowledgeable background of real estate on the Harb is so that when we run into questions of the cost of potentially extensive repairs, the value of a house, it, it brings a professional opinion to the Harb. It helps us better inform our decision. Most of the time we're talking about roofs, new siding. And so these are not real issues. But occasionally there is, there may be something where that becomes an issue. And so it's valuable to have someone who has that knowledge on the Harb. So I'm actually really thrilled that she's willing to serve. And when the board was initially set up, we did have a broker who was serving, broker was on the board, but not attending the meetings. So it was a technical fulfillment without any practical results. So I think we're in a better position here, even though we cannot technically fulfill broker position. As for, you know, the Historical Commission, she's very interested in serving. We are always eager to have people who are interested in serving and you know, ironically, Kathy Goan, who is only on the Harb is in fact very interested in doing historical things for America two fifty. So this again gets back to the fact that we have this overlap. So I would very much appreciate it if you would appoint her to our two boards because I'm looking forward to having her on both.
I think we're lucky, you'd be lucky to have.
I certainly feel that way.
Yeah, I'll turn your mic on.
I make a motion that the board accept the Historic Commission and the Historical Architectural Review Board's nomination of Beth Scalish. And to appoint her to a five-year term as Historic Commission and Harb member through December thirty-first of twenty twenty-eight. Can I have a second?
I'll say.
Good, good.
Let me take a chair.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries five to zero.
Thank you.
Thank you, Paul.
All right. Mark Swadd is here to give the Franklin Sportsman Association update.
Okay. Deer hunting season is officially over. It ended January twenty-seventh. We had a very successful season. We ended up with thirteen deer. Last year we had twelve. I think the year before that we had thirteen. So we're right, right in our normal range. Nine of the deer were antlerless, four buck. Three harvested from Banffshire, two from White Clay Crescent, seven from Franklin and one from Goodwin. Another, as usual, very good year. No safety incidents, no negative incidents with the public of any kind that I, that I'm aware of. None were reported to us anyway. So that was good. We had, we're up to a hundred and seventy-two hours of service projects as of February twelfth. That number will continue to grow over the spring and summer. We'll crank up some more numbers. And this is basically the final FSA report for this season. We don't have another one until September, which would be the twenty-four, twenty-five season. But I wanted to thank the board for allowing us to to enjoy the park while providing a valuable service and, you know, keeping the deer numbers in check. So, thank you.
Thanks, Mark. Appreciate it. See you next year. So Liam, I have the presentation here on my computer. I can share the screen. I don't know what, I don't know if that was the plan, but we can do it that way. Thank you, guys. See if it pops up on that screen up there. There we are. All right. So you just tell me, hey, next slide and I'll move it down.
Okay. So I'm Liam Kelly from Troop Thirty. And this is my Eagle Scout project. Next slide.
You know, I said I'd do it and I'm already failing. All right. Next slide.
So my goal for today is just to get the proposal signed off, which pretty much just allows me to start more intense planning and then execution of it. Next slide. So this is a map and the, of the kiosk and the posts, the red are all the posts and the yellow is the kiosk. And then there's two loops on the left-hand side, Kiko Loop and then Liam Loop, but I'm gonna change it to, I was thinking of like a Hellbender Loop, which is my bike team and the amphibian. And yeah, the main loop is gonna be blue. Next.
Move next slide?
Yeah.
Okay.
So the trail posts are gonna be five by fives with circle discs in them with arrows, colors and then text, which I have two examples of.
What are they?
Yeah.
They're like one short thing.
Yeah, sorry.
It's all pretty substantial.
Yeah, these are good.
And Liam, they're gonna be recessed into the post?
Yeah.
Great.
Action.
Okay. Kiosk example.
So the kiosk is gonna just be a board with the roof and then plexiglass over it, tag everything. It's gonna look similar to the one upon screen. Yeah. And next.
So it says it's gonna be stained or painted or just you've just been using natural wood?
Uh, the
Pressure treated?
Yeah, pressure treated. Yeah.
How about the roof? Is there shingles? I mean, do you plan on putting like some kind of cedar shingle or?
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, next. This is a cost estimate and the materials for the post and the kiosk. It's about like five hundred total. And I got a donation from Velo Ami, which is a bike racing thing. And yeah, and then the, would get it from, most of it from Oxford lumber. Then next slide. It's just a schedule, a rough schedule for now. And so today will be the February and then next thing would just be you walk the trails with the pro committee and finalize trail markers and then order them. And then build the post and kiosk at home and then May install them at the park. Yeah, next slide.
Thank you, Liam. All right. So we have a couple, I, I have a, just one question. We were talking about, I was quickly scanning, so you might have already had it in here. We were talking a little bit about the kiosk construction at the pro meeting and some of the considerations about maybe making the roof larger and installing plexiglass. Was that in added to this, uh, materials list?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay. All right. See, item seven under kiosk, plexiglass. Okay.
That's a good idea.
And so the idea, we would have the trail map. Right now, we also have kiosks at a number of locations that have the FSA hooks to, for, for, so that would be incorporated, I suppose, into this kiosk or would that be a separate kiosk? Same here. Okay.
But there's only, there's only one key. You're, I mean, not, not saying only, because I know this is a lot of work, but there's, you're building one kiosk, one big kiosk, right?
So let me go.
And it's gonna replace the one that's already there where it is, right?
Yeah.
I know originally it was, there was two planned, but we're down, we're down to one where the, where the bottom parking lot is.
So this is the, this is the older trail map because it still includes some of the, the Cross and Park trails. But the reason I brought that trail, that discussion to this meeting was, so Liam, in the larger scale scheme of things, Liam's like phase one of the trail marking project. So we have Liam putting in the posts in Franklin. And then we wanted to make, for this board to come to a decision to say, yeah, this is, these are the kinds of posts and signs we want because we're gonna make it consistent throughout the park. So it's gonna be, it's gonna be pretty neat that this is actually the first phase in a pretty large program. So it's, it's neat that you're here doing this for us. So, thank you. All right. So there's a couple of things. When we talk about Eagle Scout projects, we, we usually, the board usually provides some funding. Historically, that was, I think we, was five hundred dollars for the project. So we only need two ninety-two. So well, oh, here, I guess here's my, my, my thought. I don't know how this, how this would work practically is that we, since we historically give five hundred, do we want to do that? In case he, the head runs into cost overruns? Or do we just say three hundred?
So, so it's interesting. So I don't want to give, I don't want to give five hundred if he doesn't need five hundred. So it's a way to word that a maximum of five hundred depending on what's needed.
How about if we split it and say four hundred and anything over that, you gotta come back? Does that sound reasonable?
Yeah. Could I jump in, Dave? I'm just noticing on his estimate, he's priced out four by fours, but five by five.
Right.
Yeah. I think he's gonna need a little more money than the three hundred. So, yeah, four hundred might be good.
Let's do that.
Okay.
So let's, you'll read the motion.
Yeah. Do we, is there any, do we, is there any discussion before the, oh, we can do it.
Just read it.
All right.
Comment is, um, we don't actually give him money, right? He orders the material and then Jeff pays the bill. So there, there is no giving him money.
Right. That's correct.
Okay. I just wanted the public to hear that.
Okay.
That makes sense. That's what you're paying for what you, what you got.
Right.
Okay.
Question. So does all, is every, all the purchasing need to go through the township? It's like Liam orders more of these discs and?
No, I think, I think what'll happen is depending, well, yeah, I guess if there's certain things you have to order. Yeah. But I think if he has to go to like Oxford lumber, you just tell him it's for this project and, and they'll build, they'll build the township.
So everything else, just keep the receipts.
Yeah.
I think, I think my, and Jeff's not here tonight, but my suggestion would be just reach out to Jeff Eastburn, just give a call.
Yeah.
He'll give you the right, he'll put you on the right path.
Yeah.
So maybe if Velo Ami is gonna buy, or two hundred and fifty dollars, you just order the placards from, through their money and then you order the materials through Oxford.
Yeah.
Pay for that or something.
However, breaks out and it's.
Okay. All right. So I make a motion that the board consider a contribution of four hundred dollars towards Liam Kelly's Eagle Scout kiosk project at Cross and Park.
I'll second that.
Thanks, Dave. Any other discussion? Okay. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Motion carries five zero.
There's nothing in the motion that says we approve the project. I guess that's true. All right. I don't know. We will have to ask Guy, see. All right. All right. Well, thank you, Liam. So next steps is, so we're gonna contribute up to four hundred dollars in materials. And then you could just reach out to Jeff Eastburn. He's our township manager and he can give you advice on, and advise you on how best to get that, that stuff ordered. So you don't have to do that yourself.
Yep.
All right. Great.
Oh, and can, am I able to get it signed tonight?
Yeah, sure. We'll sign. Yeah. Absolutely. All right. Good job, Liam.
Yeah. Thank you.
This is a project that we wanted to get started for a long time and now I think so.
He does a good job. He has to do crossing them.
That's true. That's true. So never be too good at your job. Hey, Don, do you want to start talking about the Easter egg hunt?
Well, we're gonna have a really lively park this year. I'll tell you what. Saturday, March sixteenth is our bi-annual Easter event. And we didn't have it last year, so we're gonna have it this year. And we've ordered, I think Stacy's right there. Jeff and Stacy and I are working on it along with Melissa. And Jeff has reached out to Bob Mangus already to help have, help get the FSA to help throw out the Easter eggs that are already filled. And I think Stacy, we got a thousand. The Easter egg hunt will be at ten o'clock. And then between ten thirty and twelve, Stacy has plain Easter eggs with stickers and markers that's gonna be in the pavilion. And we have gotten the wonderful young lady who was at the Fall Festival last fall doing the face painting that people absolutely loved her and she's excited about coming back and helping us. And Stacy and Jeff and I and Melissa are gonna meet on Friday morning to tighten this up. And then after that meeting, we're gonna go right into the Fall Festival meeting with Stefan. And so then we're planning on giving our Red Bud Tree giveaways. And we had talked about at our workshop meeting, I'm hoping we can have as many people come and be Franklin Township ambassadors as possible. So I talked to Betsy. We're gonna do a table for the giveaways for the trees and any plants, if anybody does want to do a plant swap because it's too early to show them the garden. So we'll have people there representing our garden. And we have to tape off the garden because last time we had the Easter egg hunt, we had it in the garden. What was the garden, is the garden. So we have to do it on the other side of the, the brick building. Kind of out in the grass, but that's gonna be all right because most of those kids are very, very young anyway. So I'm hoping as many people will come. I'm gonna start sending out, we have sent out some Franklin Township invitations. But I'm gonna send it out to the FSA people and the pro committee can come and help and be ambassadors and, and contact Stacy or I for any jobs that you could have to help us. That would be lovely.
Last. Hi, do you mind? I want to ask Don a question. So, Don.
Yes.
You were talking about um plant exchange. Um, and while I'm not necessarily looking to um acquire any plants myself, I was out in my vegetable garden um today and yeah, I know. And I um discovered I, you know, I've I've been tolerating the presence of a couple. They're not. I don't know if they're specifically Autumn Joy seed uh seedum, but um they're very similar to Autumn Joy and they need to be dug up and divided. And I'm thinking I could probably generate uh at least a dozen plants, if not more. Um, if there's no particularities concerning what kind of plants you're interested in for this thing, because obviously they're they're not especially native, for example.
No, but this is this is a spring. We're just trying and I know we want to try to stay as native as we can, but we're just trying to generate giveaways of plants and I'm trying to get some seeds, but I'm gonna see free seeds too, just to get people in the idea of getting plants when they come over. So that would be heavenly.
Okay, sounds good.
I don't know that we need to call it a plant swap. I think it's just a plant giveaway.
There you go. There you go, Bets. Good job.
What I have are houseplants, so.
That's right. Well, I'll I'll get I'll get with you and Stacy and we can make a some kind of a big sign to put on the table. That's great.
Are we ready for Earth Day?
I think we are.
Now that Easter is over, Earth Day, um Franklin Township Cleanup is going to be April twentieth. It's near um Earth Day and John Arboc, are you still on?
Yeah, I'm on.
Has agreed again to host it. Help us.
Yeah, Jeff and I talked about this. Um, we haven't really got together in any detail, but we're gonna pull the material out that we have. We believe we have most of the material we need other than a few signs. And I've got all the safety meeting materials that I use to go over the safety issues with the participants beforehand. I'll get all that together and probably in the next few weeks, Jeff and I'll put that all together, but we'll we'll be ready.
Okay. Um, thank you.
John, John, do you want people to sign up for specific roads?
No, what they do is they come in and um I ask them whether they want to go any particular place and if they don't know. Um, I try to direct them to their own neighborhoods if if uh if they want to do that. But I keep track of it. I have a map and I just highlight what they're gonna do so we don't assign it to somebody else. It's pretty informal.
Okay.
Uh, we we don't need any advanced thing. The only thing we do do um related to paperwork is they do sign a uh a liability release.
Somebody out there with a flashlight walking down the road.
So we'll use that same liability release that we used last year if.
What's his name?
Okay, thanks.
All right. Thanks, John. Appreciate your help uh with that. So next I want to just have a brief discussion about our big big Elk Creek Preserve Advisory Committee. Uh, last Friday, the stakeholders uh met and those stakeholders being uh representation from Franklin Township, Elk Township, of the three county commissioners, uh Representative John Lawrence, um and then Senator Kane and Senator Comida sent um staff members uh to attend in their stead. Uh, the the focus of the meeting was to appoint our representatives for the Big Elk Creek State Park Advisory Board uh that is going to help uh the DNCR uh plan what they're going to do with Big Elk Creek. Uh, so just a quick a quick rundown. Um, there other than the appointees, uh, we had some notes regarding um some of the advice we'd like to have the DCNR consider. First is establishing rules of order for the advisory board. Um, the stakeholders came to a agreement that, you know, DCNR is 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 insisting that they have that that they're they chair this organization or this this ad board. So what we what we're suggesting is why don't we have a co-chair? So we have a member of DCNR be a co-chair with a member of the appointed folks um from the stakeholders. So uh, that's what's gonna be written here. I had the letter in front of me that I'll be sending a DCNR that includes the stakeholders' suggestions of a co-chair, um how they uh mission statement and how we think or some options for how they're gonna interact with the public, et cetera, et cetera. So um, the next process is going to likely be coming from DCNR as they are going to reach out directly to these appointees. Uh, there is going to be some question about whether or not they agree with these meetings to be open to the public. There's a lot of different options for them, uh fully open, like these meetings where the members of the public can come and there's public comment right down to recording the meetings and making them available at a later time. Um, we had some discussion there, but we're gonna leave it up to the advisory board to decide how best they want to manage these meetings. Um, so with that, we're gonna be sending this letter out to DCNR with our appointees um this evening. They should be receiving it in their inboxes. So uh, I don't know if I have anything else to say about that. I don't know, Donna.
I think so. I don't know if people are getting the sense, but um the the people that came to the meeting, DCNR was not there. They chose not to attend the meeting with the rest of the stakeholders. So we what we could do was the best that we could do is come together with a consensus and make recommendations. Um, so then, as as Dave said, the next step is presenting that to DCNR. And a gentleman from Senator Comida's uh team has agreed to also talk to DCNR and and make the case that that having a co-chair um would be a good way forward. And part of the reason why we want that is because we want to have something to say with the agendas, right? And and the way we work here, the the chair has a lot to say with what's actually talked. Everybody can contribute, but the chair has a lot to say in terms of what's actually talked on the agenda. So that's we'll see what they do. Um, the the other thing is that um we wanted to have a handover meeting. Once again, it's gonna be up to DCNR to agree to that, but we want to have a the next meeting be the stakeholders, as as Dave described them, along with the ad board representatives and have one meeting where we're all there and that way we can um just do do a handover, especially since DCNR wasn't at the last meeting. It's I I I'll be honest with you. It's gonna be it's gonna, I think, be touch and go for a while to see how DCNR wants to play uh in in this forum. Um, but uh we're gonna we're going in good faith and we will do our best and um try to move try to move this forward. If it doesn't work, then we have other options, but we we want to make this make this work.
All right. Thank you, uh, Donna. Yeah, so we're gonna be moving forward with uh with this with these suggestions. And as as Donna said, um, it is gonna be a little bit of touch and go to see how how much involvement we have um with this ad board. Uh, so I think that's all I have for Big Elk Creek Preserve update. So if we want to go to Donna.
So guys, is this is it right? We're finally ready for this solicitor's report. I think you're gonna talk to us about the general code and the work that's been done in that to get that up to speed.
Yes. Good evening, everyone. Um. The uh General Code Initiative has been ongoing for uh quite a while. Um, just for those listening who may not have been uh following it, uh basically what the township has done is engaged uh a a very reputable and uh widely used organization to take the township's currently effective legislation and put it in a form that's readily available to uh its constituents and other folks who are interested in doing business in and complying with the the zoning and land use ordinances within within Franklin Township. So we've gone over it several times. Uh, I I have delivered a copy of it in paper form to um to uh the the supervisors. I I think it's fair to say it's as thick as any phone book that I've ever seen. Um, and it has every everything in there that currently exists. The the um the board is not enacting new legislation or changing old legislation through this mechanism. It's simply taking everything that exists in paper or binder form and making it available in an E-code uh format which can be easily accessed uh and easily amended as the board moves forward with its own legislative initiatives. In order to do that, the board has to pass a an ordinance which uh formally adopts that codification of its existing legislation. So what my office did was advertise that ordinance, the advertisement uh and the proofs of publication and the ordinance is in the packet. Um, I I I don't know that I can say much more on what the codification is. It is a standard fare in most townships in Chester County uh currently. Uh, so I recommend to the board that it consider the ordinance favorably. And uh nothing will change other than the ease of use of of your uh current ordinances.
Just just
And I'll be happy to take questions.
Yeah, guys, because there were there were some changes, but a lot of them were done for um either words weren't used appropriately or there was maybe some sections didn't agree with other sections. So there was a little bit of work trying to uh I don't know what the words to to make it aligned, right? Those areas that weren't aligned. Yeah.
There were there were there was non-substantive modifications to to the language that does not affect at all uh the intent uh or 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 impact of of those sections. And they were very minor. Uh, you know, when you collect these these ordinances over five, six, seven boards, and I'm sure Mr. Arboc could 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 uh could attest to this. Uh, things tend to be done in a particular way. This this uh standardizes the language, makes it consistent with what what we'll see. Um, what we'll see throughout Chester County and southeastern Pennsylvania.
Okay. Uh, should I do the motion or should any any more questions?
Okay, so I'm I'll make the motion, Guy. Um, I make a motion that the board approve ordinance twenty twenty four dash zero one. The Franklin Township Ordinance Codification as presented by the township solicitor Guy Donatelli. If I have a second for that? All right. Thanks, Jim. Any discussion?
Okay.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay? Okay, motion carries five to zero. This is a long time coming. Good job.
Yeah.
Well, we keep knocking them off the list.
Yep, and now and then new stuff shows up like Lexington.
Yeah, let's let's.
Well, Lexington Point, I will start off with Lexington Point unless uh the chair wishes to do so. Um, and I'm gonna start with a meeting, what I'll call a coordination meeting uh or a summit, if you will, of all the interested consultants um and parties with respect to this particular uh project. We met on February fifth. Um, uh, I believe in Westchester, there was about eight of us there. Everybody who understands the project or who wanted to understand the project attended. Uh, Jeff was there and we basically discussed uh the developers' uh responsibilities uh as it related to bringing the sewer treatment plan online and what that developer needed to do in order to do that. And we had a a I can't bring it up while I'm speaking, but it's I reviewed it this evening. There's a July twenty three memo to the to the developer sort of outlining what uh it needs to do in order to make us happy, at least as consultants are concerned. And the thought the the thought process was and what ultimately came about was we were going to present again to the developer that memorandum, basically saying, look, here's what we've asked you to do. You've seemed to comply with these items. These other items have not been complied with. You need to get your act together. So um I I looked at it from a a a legalistic legalistic standpoint. I know that Stan and my partner Vince Pompo dug a little bit more into the uh uh science and engineering of it. So with with sort of with that outline of where we are with it, I'm gonna turn it over to Stan and then be available to answer any questions from my from my side that may be posed.
So so before you do that, I just have a question for you, Stan. So what 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 I would be looking for, and it would be nice if it could be written down. Um, I I want to know what are all the pieces are that have to be in place before it gets turned over to us and what that timeline looks like? And because I know there's a lot of, for example, I think there's they have to have six months of looking at the water, right? That has to be done. And then there has to be um, the thing has to be up and running. And I I believe it has to up and run for a year before it can be handed over to us. I just want to see. I like to see a checklist and just have a sense. What is the soonest possible that we could get get it in our in in our hands based on all the all the I know you can't control everything, but based on what boxes have to be checked? What what is the soonest that we we would expect to get it? I'm happy for it to take as long as it takes. But but um I just I just I just want it's like almost like a reality check, you know, what's what's coming away? So I don't know if you already had that prepared, but I would like to have that pre-presented to us sometime.
Sure, sure. Let let me start with the 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 answer your question. When is the soonest possible time that it might be dedicated to the township? And that is um August of next year, probably more realistically, September of next year. Um, and and let me back up. I'll explain what will need to happen between now and then that that takes us to that date. Uh, Donna, you mentioned that that you'd like to see kind of a list of all the all the things, all the buffs that need to be ticked before they can get everything done out there. The um the July sixth twenty twenty three memo that Guy was referencing, I think essentially does that. That was really the goal of that memo and it um it compiles all of the agreement requirements as um as you may recall, Vince Pompa, who had coordinated with me on on preparing that memo uh was originally key in in authoring the agreement and is very familiar with it. And he and I worked together to go through to try and parse out everything from the agreement that would be a a step towards getting this online and a step towards continuing to operate it and 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 moving towards township dedication. We had also looked at the
So just a comment. So I think the memo is a good starting point. But I think what has to be aligned with that memo is some timeline. So you you have the you have the boxes, but it would be no as of today. Where where are they at on that on on those? So I'll I'll let you go.
Sure, sure. No, I understand. And and the difficulty with timing is is a lot of it is in the developer's court. So um, it's gonna be very difficult to peg a date to many of these things. But um I can tell you right now, if if you've if you've seen the memo, um, the the first item notes that they have a number of monitoring wells that some needed to be abandoned and a new monitoring well drilled. That's done. Item one is checked off. The developer did do that. Item two is that six months background water quality monitoring period that you were noting. And that's part of the DEP permit. Uh, the goal of that is is basically to collect samples from all monitoring wells out there, have lab analysis, have all that recorded to establish a background level so that once the plank is into operation, if there is an increase in some in something of concern to DEP, we can then compare it to what the existing background level was out there. So it's uh it's a requirement by the DEP permit, but it's also important to protect the township. So they're they're in the process of doing that right now. They started. They took collected their first sample in November. Uh, they should, if they've not already done it yet, they'll be collecting their second sample um this month. Um, after the samples are collected, they need to go to a lab for analysis. There are DEP certified labs that they need to use to go through all that. Thus far, they've been complying with all the sampling and testing procedures per the permit. Uh, assuming they continue with the sampling in February, then the last sampling, which would take us fully through their six month period uh would be in May, given typical timing for getting it to the lab and getting the reports back. It it may very well push into the beginning of June before all that paperwork is there. Um, everything else aside, that is the earliest that the plant could be started up and we could have a DEP approval to operate it. That everything else aside is a pretty big caveat though. And and a lot of that gets into the wastewater treatment plan agreement. Some of it is relates to construction status, but most of it is the treatment plan agreement. As far as construction status, as 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 John noted at the beginning of the meeting, it does the plant does appear to be pretty much complete. And 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 John, you're right, it is uh the biggest. There's some very minor odds and ends on the plane itself that just The biggest, there's some very minor odds and ends on the plant itself that just need to be finished up, but the, the most substantial construction item that's still out there is to repair the piping and wiring that goes between the treatment plant and the drip irrigation fields. As, as, as has been noted in our monthly reports to the board, the developer, when they were out there doing some grading for some of the home construction with an excavator dug down and ripped through all that piping and that wiring and tore it out of the ground. We've since been trying to work with the developer's engineer to make sure we're all on the same page about exactly how that's going to be repaired. The piping's not necessarily a big deal. That's pretty straightforward, but when you rip very important wiring out of the ground with an excavator, it doesn't necessarily guarantee us that we've, we can just place things back together and we're good to go. So the electrical engineers have been weighing heavily into that, and I think we're very close to the point where we're in agreement about how that can be done and all the testing that's going to be, need to be done to make sure all that wiring is still sound. Based upon my most recent discussions with the contractor out there, I think it's likely that work would be done in March. So it will be possible to have the plant ready for a startup in May. But there is a lot of developer obligations that need to be in place before it can be started up and placed in service, and those are, those are a lot of the things that are listed in the July twenty twenty-three memo. And a number of those things come, need to come to the board before they can progress. And, yeah, for example, the, the developer has to select a licensed wastewater treatment plan operator. The EP requires a licensed operator to be out there. That operator needs to meet with the approval of the board. It's on the developer to, to provide some, some background, some information to help the board decide if this is in fact an acceptable operator to use out there. Developer also needs to get some budgetary information together, which is key to developing what the initial user rates may be out there. They also need to give us a projected bill-out schedule for the remaining homes. As, as, as you might imagine, as additional homes come online and more people are able to start paying whatever that user rate may be, then the overall fund balance is going to get closer and closer to breaking even. So that schedule is key to projecting how everything's going to work out. All of that stuff that is still on the developer's plate are, are among the things that is just, we just can't predict timing on. I, I would venture to guess at this point in time, that may be the controlling point as to when we can have a treatment plant startup and not any of the permit issues, not any of the construction issues.
So, so they can't, they can't turn that, flip the switch to turn that plan on until they have the licensed operator, that they have the cost figured out that they, they don't, and I know even then, the township, the residents don't need to pay right away. Like, it's still, it's still on the developer for another year, I, I believe, right?
Well, the residents that are, are connected would, would need to start paying at a point in time, but it's on the developer to pay the shortfall. Obviously, the, you know, for example, there's now seven homes, maybe eight occupied now. I was coordinating with your zoning officer a couple days ago, the certificate on safety for an eighth home may have been issued, but let's say it's eight homes. Those, those, those eight homeowners clearly cannot fund all of the costs to run wastewater treatment plan. So there's going to be that big gap, and that big gap, all apart from any other, assuming there's no other issues that come up that are also the developer's responsibility, that big gap is all going to be on the developer.
Has to run a, so assume we, we hit all that, right? They, the developer does everything they need to do. We know, we have a licensed operator, we have budgetary stuff, the plant gets flipped on. It, it, it runs with the developers on top, watching it for a year before it's handed over to us, at least a year, right?
Correct, yeah, there's, well, it, it's actually, it's actually a little bit of over a year, and I'll explain why. And this goes back to the agreement as well. Once everything is in place so that, that we can all agree, okay, we're, we're ready to put this plant online, it's defined in the agreement that'll run for an initial ninety-day period. And that initial ninety-day period is, is basically just shake out any bugs, make sure there's no minor again, minor odds and ends or glitches that might come up. That's all going to be while it's being operated by the licensed operator. It's, you know, with the EP approval behind us, but once we have that behind us, then we would call it a final completion. The earliest that the township could accept dedication would be a year from that point. The other significant criteria for that would be at least seventy-five percent of homes are occupied. There's a, a number of other, of reasons why that could be extended. For example, the agreement includes some some carve-outs for if there's a significant problem that comes up and the developer doesn't fulfill their obligations to address that problem, then that period continues to toll and, and go further on. So the one year is the earliest possible period and and, and of course, exactly how that proceeds with the developer obligations is very difficult to project. So all of that.
Wait, it's, it's a one year after then, that first ninety days, right?
Correct. So following that timeline, assuming we are able to start up, and I'll say the beginning of June, then we take ninety days, and that'll take us to the beginning of September this year, and another year will be the beginning of September next year. So as it started with, that would be about the earliest possible period that the township might accept dedication of it.
Really, really helpful. Thanks.
Sure. Yeah, thanks, Stan. And I, so I have a, we had, Donna had asked for sort of a checklist or a running punch list of, of items for us to review and make sure that all the Ts are crossed and Is are dotted. Who will supply that? Is that something that comes from you, Stan, that here's all of the the action items, or do we have something on file already where we can have it in our meeting books when we talk about Lexington Point?
Yeah, I don't, I mean, I've seen the memo. That's, I think, I, and I, I know we can pay you to do it, but I think it would be helpful to create another, a document using that memo, but laying it out just like you talked about it.
Okay, just, just. Okay, some of it, and be happy to do that. All of it is not necessarily sequential, but, but, you know, we'll try, I'll try and lay out as best we can what we anticipate the sequence would be. And, and just kind of, yeah, I'll, I'll, I'll put that in kind of a checklist format, which might be a little bit easier to track and understand. That'd be great. I mean, it, this is something that, you know, the township's going to be taking on a huge financial responsibility with this, with this project, and we want to make sure that everything is exactly right before we take dedication to this plant. Understood. Yeah, thank you. And you've done so far a great job. I know this has always been a, well, this has been a very strange ride as we've gone through this process, so I'm glad we're at least getting to some form of closure. So not going.
Yeah. Hey Stan, the existing homeowners, they start paying as soon as the treatment plan is turned on, or is there a period before they start paying too?
I believe it's as soon as it's turned on. I have to double-check the agreement. It may be after that ninety-day initial startup period, but under other scenario, again, assuming everything else comes together, you know, it would be sometime this summer.
Yeah, thank you.
Sure.
Stan mentioned a spray field. The, the treated waste, treated water, is it all in a spray field or does some go into a creek or something? I would, I always thought it would go into a creek, or.
It's, Stan, can you answer that?
Sure, sure. I'd be happy to. Yeah, and, and I apologize if I said the spray field, I misspoke. It's, it's drip irrigation fields. They're on, they're, they're large fields with small diameter drip tubing placed about six to eight inches below the ground surface and, and the wastewater is fed under, under a calibrated pressure through that tubing. There's, they call them emitters for the purpose of the discussion. We can just think of them as small holes in that tubing, though, that's spread it out through, throughout the large area of the drip field. So it's, it's very, very roughly like a, a subservice disposal bed, but but generally encompasses more area and is a little bit discondered to the groundwater and the environment.
Could I ask Stan a question? Yes.
Go ahead, Paul.
Yes, yes, please.
Okay, I didn't hear you. Sorry, I didn't have your mic. So Stan, if I assume this system will last ten or fifteen years or something, then we'll need a capital investment to replace a tank or some pumps or something. Does the annual fee from the homeowners like build some sort of capital fund to do these big replacements later on, or does the township have to foot that bill?
Excellent question, Paul. The way the agreement is set up is the developer is responsible for a capital reserve fund that would, that would allow for replacement of all the items that, that one would anticipate would wear out. For example, a concrete vault, we can't really predict it's going to wear out in a certain period of time, but, you know, pumps, all those things that do have a reasonable service life. We worked with the developer's engineer and projected an estimated schedule for all of those components, an estimated cost for replacement of all those components, did the calculation for what that cost might be at, at the period in the future when they may, may run out of their useful service life. Added all that up to, to a fee, and the developer is obligated to pay all of that before they walk away from the development. So the township would have, would have all of the funds necessary for a full capital reserve at that point. Now, as time goes on and some of that funding needs to be used and major components need to be replaced, that, that, that capital reserve funding would need to continue. That may impact user rates at that point in time, but I think we're pretty, that's pretty far down the road.
All right, thanks, but.
So Paul, I just want to be clear, the, the way this is set up, the township can't pay for it. I mean, the town, the, the general residents of the township cannot pay for this. This, this is, this is going to be the responsibility of the residents that live in that area. And, and the fee that, that's charged has, as Stan is going to have to take that into consideration. So it's, yeah, it can't be spread out over the whole, over the whole township. That, we're not allowed to.
Yeah, Donna, when I was a supervisor, that was one of the things we wanted to see in the agreement, and I was just trying to check if it still is there. You know what I mean? Like, I didn't, I don't know if things had changed, because we were very worried about that. And then the second question, which I don't have an answer to, is I see some of the townships in our area selling their septic, their sewage treatment as an asset and getting paid for it to a private company. And they sell it to a private company, who then has licensed operators. So is this an asset to the township that could be sold? Or is this a liability that we're going to have to find someone and just pay them to run it for us?
Well, I think, I think asset and liability is, is a judgment call. Leave, leave Paul to, to, to you and other residents of the board member, but to answer your question, the, you, you're right, there is a trend and has been for some time now for municipal wastewater systems to be sold to private companies that operate and control the Pennsylvania Public Utilities Commission. This unfortunately is not one that's going to fall into that category. The reason being, it's just too small. It's not, there isn't enough critical mass there to get any of those companies, which are generally fairly large, interested in it. Saw a number of years ago, the township had reached out to several to investigate possibilities. That's ultimately where that concluded. And, and I don't believe there's, there's really any good likelihood that, that that's going to change in the near future. It's just, it's just too small and isolated a system for one of them to get involved.
All right, but if, if the township did find someone, it would be legal to sell it.
Yeah, it would be. We would need, we would need DEP approval for it. And as with everything involved with DEP, that's a process, but it's certainly a process that could be done if something, if something came up, yes.
All right, thanks, Dan. Nice to see you after ten years.
Likewise, Paul. All right, thank you very much. Do we have any, any other comments from the board on this topic? All right, if not, thank you, Stan. Thank you, Guy. Good update. So now that brings us to our second public comment. Public comment can include comments on anything attendees may want to share. Commenters must state their name and whether they are a township resident or a taxpayer of the township. Do we have any further public comment?
This is John Auerbach, Franklin Township resident. I've got a couple of points that I want to make related to what the board might do in this interim period before they accept this thing. I think I mentioned this before, that you might be looking to interview various contractors who provide the service you need. That sounds like the operator, the developer is going to have a, an engineer in place, but you may want somebody else, or you may find somebody that's more competitive, but you might want to start looking for companies that provide that service, and the service would be daily operation at a plant and the short-term maintenance and replacement of consumables. The second contract you might want to look at is an administrative one, where the contractor provides the administrative function of collecting the bills and managing the, the collection and, of course, delinquency and all the things that go along with that. I don't think you want the township staff to have to deal with delinquent bills and things like that. They probably would need a piece of software to do it, so you might want to look at a company that could provide that service, much like the tax collector services do. They, they, they're very efficient at collecting money and managing delinquents, delinquencies, so. Just related to that maintenance thing that Paul brought up, that I think the long-term capital maintenance is a component of the monthly cost that over time, that capital reserve will be built up and replaced as it's used up. But I think the, the monthly component should, monthly bill should have a component of it for long-term capital. But that's all I got on that. The Avondale Fire Company did a really nice job tonight. Just an interesting point of why you don't get much activity from Avondale and Franklin Township, because Avondale is only responsible for twenty percent of our township, or ten, excuse me, twenty, ten percent. And West Grove provides the other ninety percent, and the areas I think we cover, that they cover up in the northeast section of our township, Lannenberg Highlands and Twin Bridges and such. Third comments related to the gravel addition to the trails. I recommend that you review that with Ron Reagan, because putting gravel down is creating a maintenance liability and future costs for the township. And there could be some rules and regulations related to impervious surface if you put that stuff down. I, I think Ron would be the right resource. No further comments.
Okay, thank you, John. Any other public comment? All right, not hearing any. I make a motion to adjourn tonight's meeting at nine, ten PM. All right, thank you, Jim. Any discussion? Not hearing any discussion. I adjourn. Oh, actually, let's vote. All in favor, say aye. Aye. Any opposed, say nay. All right, most of the meeting is adjourned. Good night, everybody.